My mic's not on, but just to let you guys know that we're just waiting on Ms. Jessica to be here. She'll be here shortly so now we can start meeting. We'll start without her, so we'll go ahead and start without her. So I am calling this meeting to order, and today's date is Wednesday, November the 12th, and it is... what time is it?
It's 4:33.
4:33.
4:33. Okay, thank you. Can someone take care of that?
It's blinking, the light.
The light is blinking. Okay. Can we establish forum, please?
Yes. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza.
Present.
Mayor Proton Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Ortega-Gerla.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we have established forum.
Okay, thank you. Next item is an invocation and pledge of allegiance, and today we are honored to have Pastor Joseph Ramientos lead us in the congregation. Please stand.
Father God in heaven, first and foremost, we thank you for this wonderful city of Mission that you have privileged us to live within it. And we thank you that as you have established it years back, it has become a beacon of your goodness, not only to the Missionites, but to those around us. And today, as our beloved Madam Mayor Norrie Garza, together with her council, meet together to discuss issues not only within the city, but also family issues. We thank you for how you will give them the wisdom that they needed, the knowledge that they would acquire from you to undertake all these things and cause them to remember the wonderful words of Asurun: "To seek first your kingdom and your righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you." And for us, their constituents, their God, we ask that you will give us always the privilege and the opportunity to support them in every decision that they make, to be with them, to assist them in every little way we can. Because we recognize that it is you who have put them in this position of leadership in our community. Lord, we thank you for the wonderful outcome that you will give to these, your servants, this afternoon. For we pray this in Jesus' precious name and for His sake. Amen.
Pastor, will you come up? Pastor, will you come up and take a picture with us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your prayers. I'm praying for us.
Yes. May standing to the pious religion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Next item is disclosure of conflicts of interest.
Yes, we do have one on file for Councilman Alberto Vela in reference to item 33.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into presentations, I have a prepared statement that I would like to read at this time. So if you'll grant me this opportunity. The city is aware of the concerns expressed by residents of the Cimarron Homeowners Association and the city regarding Valley Tennis Academy operations at Cimarron's recreational facilities. The EDC and Mission acquired the Cimarron facilities earlier this year. At that time, Valley Tennis Academy had an existing lease with a prior owner for the use of the tennis facilities. These facilities were not open for public use. In efforts to work with VTA on August 18th, 2025, the EDC and Valley Tennis Academy entered into an amended lease, mutually amending the termination of the lease, and that date was extended to October 31st, 2025. At this time, Mission EDC is working towards the possible sale of Cimarron to a private third party with hopes of restoring the Cimarron's recreational facilities. We ask for everyone's patience as the plans for the development and revitalization of this area come to fruition. So that is my prepared statement. And I know that we have quite a bit of our residents here that would like to speak in reference to this. And this is kind of out of the ordinary, but I feel that it's important to allow our citizens to voice their concern. So I know there's a... Yes.
Mr. Guerrero, you can...
Mr. Guerrero? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. First of all, I want to apologize because I'm going to speak in Spanish. It was my first language. Buenas tardes. Me presento, mi nombre es Guerrero. Mi dirección es 2004 Brazos Court, Mission, Texas, en Cimarrón.
Okay.
Okay. Bueno, primero que nada, me dirige usted alcalde, Nori Gonzalez-Garza, y a todo el board de la ciudad de Mission. Quiero agradecer la oportunidad que nos dan por expresarnos, que es importante para nosotros. Como usted bien lo mencionó, se cerró, a lo mejor contractualmente estaba anticipado, pero para los ciudadanos del área y miembros de esa academia fue algo repentino. Me gustaría expresarme a nombre no solamente mío. Ahí ya vemos más de 150 familias afectadas, más de 500 personas que, como le mencioné, de un día para otro hemos sido, pues desalojadas de un lugar que era no solamente donde practicábamos tenis. Era un lugar de recreación familiar, donde todos sus hijos, nuestras esposas, nosotros mismos como padre de familia íbamos y hacíamos actividades deportivas, sociales y recreativas. Había gimnasio, había clases de spinning, clases de pilates, ligas de hombres, de adultos, ligas de mujeres. Muchas actividades muy bonitas, la verdad, que ahora para nosotros sean cerradas. Además de eso, como residente de la colonia Cimarrón, ya estamos muy afectados con la situación del campo de golf, demasiado. Y el señor Plata lo debe saber, el residente también de Cimarrón y es miembro del board de Cimarrón también. El club, lo que es la Casa Club, donde estaban las canchas de tenis, era lo único que mantenía viva esa área. Gente, familias, evitaba que se acumule basura, ruedores, animales, como se han visto en el campo de golf, coyotes, zorros, muchos animales, jabalís incluso. Además que... Cuando estaba habilitado, amanecía muchas veces el estacionamiento con residuos que había habido en la noche anterior, pues gente que había ido a hacer no sé qué cosas. Ahora imagínense ahora que está completamente cerrado. Como residentes de Cimarrón, eso es algo también que nos va a afectar mucho. Okay? Ahora, como parte de esta academia, y no quiero hablar de la academia porque entiendo que es algo particular, es un negocio personal de alguien o de algunos socios, quiero hablar como parte de la comunidad de Cimarrón y de la familia tenística que somos. En esa academia entrenan el 80% de los alumnos de tenis de Sherilán, tanto de high school como de Villagray. Que los resultados hablan por sí mismos. Los últimos dos años se han representado a nivel estado al Valle de Texas. Son los mejores del Valle de Texas. Y lo tenemos comprobado. Tengo una carta de la coach de Villagray respaldando esta información que le estoy dando. La coach de high school, ella no nos dio carta, pero está firmada su petición. Entonces, no solamente está afectando a la colonia o la comunidad, está afectando al distrito escolar de Sherilán. Ahora nos han enviado a Benson Park. 15, 18 minutos de distancia donde estamos. Nosotros entrenamos de 5 de la tarde, 6 de la tarde, dependiendo qué lunes, hasta las 9:30 de la noche. Salimos de allá, está desolado. Supongo que conocen ustedes allá. Las canchas no tienen luz. Nosotros como padres de familia nos hemos organizado para rentar gruas con luces para poder aluzar nuestras canchas. Son cuatro canchas, están en muy mal estado. Los baños están horribles. Y todo el tiempo nos sentimos inseguros porque pasan coches altas velocidades haciendo cosas que no son apropiadas, ¿no? Entonces realmente nos sentimos muy, muy afectados. Nos gustaría de verdad que entendemos que hay algo que está sucediendo aquí de negociaciones. Si es así, si es el caso, nos gustaría estar entrados, no como alguien que va y juega tenis. Para empezar, tengo entendido que legalmente se le tiene que informar al hecho hoy de Cimarrón. El hecho hoy no está enterado de nada. Nos gustaría saber si efectivamente existe una negociación ya con algún dueño en particular. Si sí la hay, porque hemos escuchado muchas cosas, que hay un precontrato, que hay una promesa de compra. Bueno, si es así, que no lo van a saber y lo vamos a respetar. Y a lo mejor ir a hablar con el nuevo dueño. Pero también queremos saber esa promesa de compra qué vigencia tiene. Por si no se cumple, qué va a pasar entonces después. Porque esto puede tardar un año o dos en que lo compren. Y una vez que lo compren, en que empiecen a construir. O sea, son muchas cosas. También nos dijeron, porque hemos estado hablando con diferentes personas que están involucadas, que para que esa venta se haga tiene que estar desocupado completamente todas las instalaciones. Como ustedes deben saber, hay unas oficinas ahí en el club de golf que no están desocupadas.
Así es.
Entonces, si es así, pues tendríamos que estar todos desocupados. Si no es así, entonces nos sacaron a nosotros.
Y bueno, okay, está bien.
Por otra parte... Sí, perdón. Por otra parte...
Otro minuto.
Perfecto. Tenemos tres, pero ya hemos... Con esto... Gracias, le agradezco. Con esto termino. Si el contrato que tienen con esta academia ya no es válido o no lo quieren renovar, nos gustaría que como ustedes, como ciudad de Mission que están para ver el bienestar de los ciudadanos, tienen ocho canchas disponibles ahí para desarrollar el deporte en el momento de los niños y en toda la comunidad. En todo Sherilán no tenemos canchas de tenis. Las de las two, las vengo de Bivell Park... Perdón. No es Sherilán. Las que están en la Word, en Los Encinos Park, es McAllen. Donde nos están enviando ahorita, yo no sé si es ahí a Panview, Panhills o La Joya ya casi. No, lo sé. En Sherilán no tenemos canchas de tenis. Y como ustedes deben saber, esa área son de los que más impuestos se cobran. No es justo que no tengamos unas canchas dignas para entrenarle con nuestros hijos. Si no quieren renovar esa academia, nos gustaría que como ciudad busquen la manera de habilitar esas canchas. Cierren lo demás, no nos interesan... Es más, los padres de familia construimos los baños afuera si nos permiten. Que es lo que necesitamos nada más, baños y las canchas. De verdad es una afectación muy grande, no por entrenar tenis, que a lo mejor para ustedes no significa nada. Es la rutina diaria de 150 familias, que tenemos que llevar y traer hijos y vemos ahora la frustración en ellos, que llegan a la casa a diez de la noche y hacen tarea, hacen nada, bañarse. Queremos nada más que se pongan sus zapatos un poquito. A lo mejor es algo banal lo que estamos pidiendo. Hay cosas mucho más importantes en la ciudad que resolver. Pero creo que no necesita mucho tampoco para poderlo resolver. Entonces les agradezco su tiempo. Si tienen algo que nos quieran decir de momento que no sepamos, lo agradecemos mucho. Si no, ustedes digámoslo que sigue.
Okay. No podemos responder ahorita. Por eso yo nomás leí un statement, perdón, al principio. So... Lo que yo leí no era una respuesta. Era nomás un statement, perdón. So... Pero tenemos... Lo hemos oído y podemos tomar eso en cuenta y a ver cómo resolvemos el problema. Pero miro que algo va a pasar muy, muy, muy bueno, ¿verdad? En esa área, porque nosotros sabemos que esa área es muy importante para el desarrollo de toda esa área, no nomás de Cimarrón, pero todo al sur del Expressway hasta la militar.
Y créame, que todos creemos que se venda y que llegue alguien inversionista importante y que desarrolle bien bonito. Todos creemos eso.
Sí.
Pero mientras eso sucede, den una oportunidad de seguir usando las instalaciones, por favor.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to make one quick clarification. Gracias por todos sus comentarios, pero nada más quería clarificar algo porque desde 13 años que yo he estado sentada aquí, a veces gente piensa algo, ¿verdad? Nosotros estamos en la ciudad de Mission. Esa área es Sherilán, el distrito de Sherilán, pero no hay una ciudad Sherilán.
No, me queda claro.
Es en Mission.
Sí, me queda claro.
Okay. Nada más quería...
No, sí, por eso estamos aquí, en la ciudad de Mission.
Okay. Gracias.
Si me permite, alcalde, le voy a entregar la carta.
Okay, sí.
Esta es una carta donde está la petición formal.
Okay.
Las firmas de los padres de familia que estamos... Nos faltan todas estas peticiones.
Okay.
En direcciones que leen.
Okay.
Esta es la carta de la presidenta del board de Cimarrón, de Maradona. Esta es la carta de la coach de Villagray. Y estos son algunos testimonios involucrados de familia que están poniendo sus expresiones en estas cartas. Si nos puede, por favor, leerlos.
Oh, sí, sí, sí. Gracias a ustedes.
Por mis gracias.
Me permite, por favor, para no... Okay, gracias. Okay. Gracias. Okay. We are going to go on, proceed with our agenda. And... First item... First item is our presentation by Veterans Land Board. Thank you so much for being here. Always look forward to this time of the year.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens of Mission. My name is Dr. John Kelly, the director of the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Division, and I bring you greetings from Austin. I do want to give you a very quick update. We are launching a small facelip project out at the cemetery. Over the coming months, we're going to be putting a new roof on the administration building, a new roof on the committal shelter. We're going to be doing some repairs around the committal shelter. We are bringing space force to the cemetery. So those five service branch poles will be taken out, replaced by six. And then we're building a big, beautiful Texas star right into that assembly area. And finally, we're going to be adding automatic gates. That work is beginning already, and will be complete by the end of March. Second item I'd like to cover very quickly is, as we enter into the Thanksgiving period, I would like to say a heartfelt thank you for the wonderful cemetery director, Mary Hernandez, from out at the cemetery and her very hardworking staff. She knows the National Cemetery Administration's standards extremely well, and the staff work very hard every day to meet those standards. I came in front of you two years ago because for the first time, our customer satisfaction score broke 99%. We were at 99.03%, and you'll recall that I came and gave you a presentation. I returned again one year ago about this time to tell you that it had amazingly gone up to 99.11%. State of Texas Veterans Land Board, to all whom these present shall come, greetings. Know ye that the city of Mission is recognized for their dedication and unparalleled service to our cherished veterans and their families. The Rio Grande Valley State Veterans Cemetery directly contributed to the achievement of an extraordinary 99.28% customer satisfaction rating for the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Division. That's I'm Dawn Buckingham, chairwoman and commissioner of the Texas General Land Office. So thank you very much. The staff are present here today, please stand up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for providing such excellent staff because at the end of the day, it's not John Kelly sitting in Austin that achieves that. It's that staff right there. So you should be very, very proud of it.
Thank you all so much for all your work and dedication. We're going to go down to get a picture with the staff.
Okay, fantastic.
The next item is Children's Grieve Awareness Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be reading a proclamation on behalf of the Children's Grieveness Center of the Rio Grande Valley. And Ms. Noellen Yasus and Mr. Bill Reagan are here to represent, if they would like to come up here. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas children who experience the loss of a loved one face challenges that can affect their hearts, minds, and overall well-being; and whereas many grieving children navigate these difficult experiences quietly, often without the support or... often without the support or understanding they need. And whereas the Children's Grievesman Center of the Rio Grande Valley, in partnership with the community, provides compassionate care, guidance, and resources to help children and families heal. And whereas by recognizing November as Children's Grief Awareness Month and November 20th, 2025, as Children's Grief Awareness Day, we honor those children, raise awareness, and inspire our community to provide comfort and understanding. And whereas the City of Mission is dedicated to creating a nurturing environment where every child feels safe, supported, and encouraged on their journey of healing. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Children's Grief Awareness Month and November 20th, 2025, as Children's Grief Awareness Day in our city and urge all residents, businesses, and organizations to wear blue, participate in local events, and join in offering support, care, and hope to grieving children and their families, proclaimed on this 12th day of November 2025.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve the proclamation as presented and read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Mayor and commissioners and City of Mission, thank you so very much. We appreciate your recognizing Children's Grievesman Center. We're going to have a special candlelight vigil at our center in McAllen. We have two centers, one in Harlingen and another in McAllen on November 20th, 6 o'clock, right? At 6 o'clock, and we sure would be pleased if all of you were able to join us for that important evening. Thank you so very much for remembering us.
And thank you for being here.
And can we get our picture made with you?
Yes.
No, I'd like to know if I say something.
Sure, absolutely. We are very grateful for your support. You know, in our world, we say that children are the forgotten mourners because we think that they do not grieve, but they absolutely do. And our center provides expressive arts therapy, and we do meet the children at where they're at, and that we can walk with them hand in hand on their grief journey. So your support means a lot, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you come up here for a picture?
Yes, please.
I'm gonna get my buddy's name and name out here and take a picture.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Sir, I appreciate you.
Well, and you get the list.
Okay, because I'm tall.
Get your call. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I can be added to all things, but.
If you have to get a chance. Yeah, if you have to get a chance. You're welcome all of you that come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time, sir. I'm grateful for your reference. Sir, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
The next item is a presentation from our Spear Memorial Library.
Good evening, mayor and city council. On behalf of the Spear Memorial Library, I would like to extend a warm invitation to you and our community residents to join us for our AuthorCon 2026. It's a two-day celebration dedicated to promoting literacy, creativity, and our local authors. The event will take place Friday, February the 13th, and Saturday, February the 14th, 2026, at the Mission Event Center. On Friday, February the 13th, will be the Students' Day, where we'll welcome students from Mission ISD, Sherelan ISD, and nearby ISD as well. The students will have an opportunity to meet local authors, and each will receive a free book to take home. On Saturday, February the 14th, will be a community day from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., open to all residents to enjoy reading and wish to support our local authors. Attendings will have an opportunity to meet and interact with writers, explore their work, and enjoy their day celebrating book and creativity. We look forward to hosting this wonderful celebration of reading and community spirit, and we sincerely hope that you will join us in support of our AuthorCon 2026. Thank you for your time and to continue supporting our library and literacy initiatives. Thank you.
That sounds great.
We do have a presentation for you that our authors put together and our media department.
Would you all like to say a little something before we see the presentation?
Thank you. My name is David Leha. I'm one of the co-founders of South Texas AuthorCon. I want to thank the City of Mission mayor, commissioners, and the citizens, the EDC, and Spear Memorial Library for opening up your arms and bringing us here to your wonderful city. It's a, AuthorCon is a dream that my partner and I came up with about three years ago to bring, you know, type of events, those type of Comic-Con events, AuthorCon events, to the Rio Grande Valley. This is going to be our third year. We were in McAllen previously at the incubator two years ago. It was a one-day thing. It was our first time gambling. We were able to draw almost 700 people total. We were in San Manito last year for the two-day concept, and we were able to bring in on Friday almost 700 children, and then on Saturday, almost 2,000. And they came, believe it or not, they came from as far north as Laredo and then as far down as Port Isabel. So it was something that really draws, especially, you know, the whole concept of literacy. This year, we're pleased to announce that we are bringing it here to Mission, and we've already got the commitment for Friday. We've got the commission, the commitment from the Mission ISD and Sherelan. So that's already 34 schools already for session one, which is going to be a total of almost 850 kids. And then we're going to look to fill the next 35 slots for the PM Commission. So we're going to have almost 2,000 children here during the Friday session. And then with, God willing, everything goes great, you know, we'll be able to break, you know, the numbers that we did, you know, in San Manito, McAllen, and we'll have people from all over the valley coming down to your wonderful city on Saturday for the, for the open-to-the-public day. But like I said, once again, I want to thank all you guys for allowing us to come here and bring in an event like this to the children. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are the fees for the children?
Oh, one thing, this is one of our, one of our dreams, yeah, it's absolutely free. Many, many times in the past when I've attended other conferences or AuthorCons, there's always some kind of fee. And the children also have to buy books. And one thing that we came up with, we came up with a sponsorship system. So right off the bat, we're going to walk in and we're going to have books available for the children. So it's something that we've kept, every child that goes is going to be able to walk away with one free book.
Okay, well, let us know about the sponsorships. I'm sure that we would be very.
Yes, our friends with the EDC are going to help us spearhead that, and we will begin with you. Absolutely, thank you.
So I've been a very small part of AuthorCon since inception, letting support as a volunteer and helping them workshop. So to see that the Davids, I guess David Leha is one of the, one of the co-founders. David Seron couldn't be here today because he's out doing some work in the community in Brownsville. And so when we started working on bringing it to Mission, we were so incredibly grateful to be supported by Spear immediately and to get the Mission Event Center. So as a president of Leadership Mission, we committed our class and our board to support them with volunteers because this is going to be the biggest event that they've had to date. And it's been such an impressive thing to know that the two Davids have done everything with zero budget, just community love and the belief in the power of education and literacy. And Leadership Mission is proud to be a very small part of it. Thank you for the opportunity to bring it to Mission.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to Mission.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Janice Pino. I'm the director of the Spear Memorial Library here in the City of Mission, and I'm happy to invite all of you to the AuthorCon 2026, February the 13th and the 14th. Friday, we have an open for the authors, please come and bring in their students, and meeting regularly, all of the authors coming. And Saturday, the 14th, it will be open to the community for all of you to come and meet and read our authors and introduce authors. So here are some of the authors that we feature in those days.
Hi, I'm Leah Luisa Tossinas, and I'm the author of Little Things Remember. You can do a chicken eat and you can do a test. Come join us on February 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00, at the Mission Event Center. It will be a great event for the whole family, and what I love most is that every child can leave with a free book.
Hi, my name is Alvaro Fondo, and I am the author of these two books, they're both in English and Spanish, and I'm here to invite you to the South Texas AuthorCon event, February 20th, 26th, from 7:00 to 2:00 p.m. The topic case at the Mission Event Center, they receive a free book. So please join us.
Hello, everyone. I'm Japun Diga Garcia, and I'm a licensed professional counselor, school counselor, and author of Jumping Casing Treasures. Would you like to discover the hidden gems in my book? Make sure that you attend the 2026 South Texas AuthorCon here at the Mission Event Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. See you here.
Hi, my name is Nancy W. and I'm here to promote the South Texas AuthorCon at the Mission Event Center, February 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and I will be promoting either of my books, so I hope to be to them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna and I'm the author of Is that you Tooth Fairy? This tooth fairy has sharp claws, this is your tooth fairy of a long, sandy tail. My nose, this is a tooth fairy of a member of the school. Have seen me at the South Texas AuthorCon at the Mission Event Center on February 14th. And while you may get a copy of the award-winning, the comic book, the cartoon book, chock full of ideas, storyboards, templates, characters, ready for you to build your character and write your story. I'll see you at the South Texas AuthorCon.
This is David, our author of the book, The Coachee Tour is a nice, nice suit, with a very special announcement for your school. I'm here to invite you Friday, February the 13th, 2026, at the Mission Event Center, South Texas AuthorCon. Come join us. You're getting a free book, you're getting a free poster, you're getting me a ton of water, some special guests, some special celebrity illustrators. Can't wait to see you there. Always heard you exercise in X. Who don't like that?
You're not going to miss this opportunity by the tooth, author of TK First Seven, and co-founder of South Texas AuthorCon. They later come into your life here with a friend of the Mission Event Center, to invite you to attend South Texas AuthorCon Friday, February 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. We're going to bring you a beautiful collection of authors and a series here in Fort Grand Valley. Would you feel free to come out, have a great time, and we still intend to receive a free book? Would you feel free, February?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mari Salgoya. I'm the author of Who's a Booze? And I'm here to invite you to the South Texas AuthorCon on Friday, February 13th, at the Mission Event Center, and I'm inviting yours to come and join us.
Hello, my name is Susan Luiz. I'm the author of Games of Natural Mind for a Matter, and I'll be at South Texas AuthorCon on February 14th. Hope to see you there.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mari De La Mosca. I'm the author of Science of Arts, Water, and the Way to Study for One Tuesday. We're inviting you to the one, February 14th, and starting to come as visitors to South Texas AuthorCon. Hope to see you all there.
Hi, everyone. This is Josef Seda Mora. And I'm here to invite you to the South Texas AuthorCon, taking place in Saturday, February 14th, at the Mission Event Center. I'm the author of Rico and Sofia Moscow and Sofia Moscow, I think. Hope to see you here.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Underwood. The puppy with the creepy pink bow, who's a new friend and was raised by this body. We welcome you to come out and join us, local authors, at the Mission Event Center on February 14th. Time to see.
See you there.
Very nice.
So we have 25 authors already committing to come into the event, and the amazing thing is that all the kids are going to be walking out with their books.
Yes.
So these are our local authors, so we do need to help them and in, give the opportunity to our students to see what it takes. Also, combined with this AuthorCon, the Spear Memorial Library and the library board with the friends of the, friends of the library, we are conducting a writing contest, and we'll be selecting three students from Sherelan ISD and Mission ISD, and we are putting together a package for future authors. And these students are going to be also participating with the authors at the event with their own set of books to be giving away to the students. Them as well, being now new authors.
This is so exciting. Thank you so much.
And we have a second part of it. So we also are involving the art departments in the schools at Sherelan and Mission ISD, and they will have an art contest, which will be judged by some noted artists in the area. So the kids will be able to, you know, have their creative expression in their art classes and be able to showcase what the artwork that they've been working on. So we're really excited about that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, what our friends were talking about, the contest for the children, it was an idea that we had to do something kind of like, like in America's Got Talent. So we wanted to test it here with the City of Mission. So like you said, the three winners are going to be chosen. We're gonna, we're gonna help publish their books, and they're going to join the 65 authors that we're bringing to be a part of, to give them that celebrity feel, to be a part of South Texas AuthorCon. And like I said, hopefully, this will be, I have no doubt that it'll be successful. And then we'll be able to springboard from this and we'll turn it into like a valley competition.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a report from our Mission Economic Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, city managers. I'm Gabrielle, Chief Operating Officer at the Mission Economic Development Corporation. I'll be giving today's update. I have a few slides to go through here. Okay, cool. Awesome. I'm happy to report the downtown assistance program has come to a wrap. We were able to award 10 downtown businesses to help revitalize and strengthen our downtown area. A few of the businesses to mention were JDG Jewelers, Inohosa Engineering, Law Office of Rene Flores, Maria Serna, 465 Productions, Triple S Thrift Shop, Savvy Publishing LLC, also known as the Progress Times, Buena Vista Farmers Market, Psycho Therapy, and Plaza San Pedro. All projects are based around revitalizing their buildings, providing new facade improvements, a fresh coat of paint, and updating the many businesses that find themselves along Conway, and we're super proud of them. We'd like to announce that we're welcoming Bargreen Ellingson to the seed. They are a national company that's looking in the hospitality industry, providing high-quality equipment and supplies to local restaurants. They are brand new to the RGV market, and they've chosen Mission to have their first sales office out of. So they have one representative in the area, and they're office-ing out of the seed. The Mission EDC has partnered up with Workforce Solutions to bring you the Hiring Red, White, and You event happening at the Mission Event Center on Tuesday, November 18th. We invite the public to come and talk to many of the employers to provide, to find their next job opportunity. The EDC will be there as well, and we're fully supporting this. We're glad that they do this in Mission every year. I think this is the third year that we've supported this event. So if you're in need of a job, this is for anyone in the community. The first hour is specifically for veteran priority access. So providing job outlets to those, to those veterans and finding those transferable skills for them to be able to succeed. Two weeks ago, the team was at our state conference for the Texas Economic Development Council. We heard from several different industry leaders and economic development adjacent speakers and shared best practices for what's going on in the state with economic development. We can't wait to implement those here in Mission. Something super exciting happening as we speak right now. Today and tomorrow, Social Fest is here in Mission. And so we had about 700 people pack into the event center to hear from different social media influencers and personalities on topics of marketing and content creation. I invite you that if you haven't, if you're able to stop by and you didn't today, there is a VIP plus ticket for the council. And then there's also tickets available through different outlets for the public to attend. This is a great event that Mission is the inaugural host for. The EDC has a booth promoting the new improvements to the Sherry Golf Course, of course. And yeah, if y'all can make it, please do so. Ruby Red Ventures applications have now closed. We came in at 42 applicants. We came in at forty-two applications, and this is for the Build Mission Fund, open to any business within the Mission City limits. Fifteen businesses have been selected by a committee, and they've each received fifteen thousand dollars in funding to go towards improving their business with marketing efforts, equipment improvement, training, and the like. And so up next, I have a little video that gives an example of what some of the past winners have done, including a mission staple that y'all might recognize.
Hi, my name is Ethiel, and I'm third generation of our family establishment, Young Young Heritage Texas. So Young Young was actually founded by my father in nineteen ninety-six, where he first started on South Conway. Then a couple years later, my grandparents started the one that we're in right now, which is the Coleman Avenue, which, one fact, actually used to be a community store known as the Outpost back in the nineties. Did you know or no? We have a great variety of dishes that kind of has a good blend of Mexican-American, but I would say our top favorites have always been tortas, hamburgers, and the Cinco de Salas. Oof, now I'm hungry. Our goal has always been to provide a comfortable and lonely space for our community where people can have a good time with some good food. So we were so excited that we got the Ruby Red Ventures grant, because ultimately the grant helps to achieve those goals. One of our first major renovations was our new roots. Another major renovation that we did was get a big beautiful sign of our name on the sign, which was also built by a Mission native. And our last part that we're currently finishing up is our beautiful mural up in the front. We hope to really continue providing great company, some warm energy, and some really good tortas. Thank you, Mission E D C, from the Young Young family. And remember, your mission starts here.
So one of the many businesses that we're starting to see the fruits of those grants, grant monies perpetuated into the community, they're looking to local contractors and providers to be able to do all of these projects, and so we're thrilled to see the fruits of that grant program. And with that, thank you very much, unless someone has a question for me on one of the items presented.
Any questions for the lead? No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or concerns? Is there a motion?
I show move, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, we'll move on to announcements.
Yes, hi, Mayor. I have a couple of announcements and festivities. So tomorrow, we're having our turkey distribution for those with a voucher. It's gonna be here across the street at the Police Department at ten A M. Also, we're gonna have the Mayor's Season of Giving on December fifth, which is the Christmas lighting at seven thirty P M. here at City Hall. And at the same time, we're gonna have the toy drive and festivities on December fifth at five thirty P M. across the street at our Mission Police Department. Also, to remind the public that the city offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, in observance of the Thanksgiving Day. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do I have a personal? All right, thank you. Counsel, is there any announcements?
Mayor, I just wanted to extend a thanks to all of the city employees that worked on their day off yesterday to help with the, with the veterans barbecue plate. That was a very amazing event, and I just wanted to give a special shout out to everybody that participated, because I know it takes a lot of hard work and a lot of time. The barbecue also, I know that the men were up all hours of the night to cook the chicken, and what can I say, I think they can open their own restaurant now. But a special thanks to our employees, because I know yesterday was a day off for them, and we had, I think, at least over twenty-five employees that were there. Thank you very much.
No comments, Mayor. Yes, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Just a happy Thanksgiving, and yes, it was a wonderful week of celebrating our veterans, so thank you to everyone that came down to celebrate. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you all for being here. I'd like to say, yes, we have had some amazing events. We had a great parade on Saturday, our veterans parade, and we had, I see a lot of the faces that were there on Saturday. I think we had great weather, we had a great attendance, we had a bunch of participants, a lot of kids, which is so important to me, because it's so important to, to pass down our history to our children, and let them know how important it is to support our veterans, and, and let them know that, that our freedoms are because of all of the men and women that have, that have been out there risking their lives. And I want to thank the families of the veterans as well, because they're, you know, they're, they're right in it as well. They, they sacrifice just as much as, as our veterans. Sometimes, I guess, that's would be true. So thanks to our veterans. Can we give them a hand? And we look forward to a, a bigger and better parade next year. So thank you so much. That's all I have, and we're gonna move on to public hearing. And the first item is conditional use permit? No, it's a rezoning request, I'm sorry.
Mayor City Council, good evening. The first item is a rezoning from office building district to neighborhood commercial district. This is for a property at the northwest corner of Taylor and Mile Two Road. There's an office building at this time at this property. The zoning is a large lot, single family to the, to the north, and agricultural to the south. So like I mentioned, there's an existing office building, a former house. It has a parking lot on the north side. Close up of the area with the parking. A survey that does not show the parking. Photo of the property from Taylor and from Mile Two. In the land use plan, it calls for a low density residential, that whole area. This shows what the C one district allows as a permitted use and a conditional, and as a conditional use. And then this shows what the neighborhood commercial district allows as a permitted use and, and conditional uses. So this went before planning zoning commission, no one spoke in opposition, but the board felt that this zoning is too intense for their property, so they recommended denial to the rezoning request. I had a conversation with the applicant after the meeting, after the planning and zoning commission meeting, and the applicant is okay with the denial of the rezoning, if there's an understanding that daycare will be allowed in the conditional use permit. The next item on your agenda is a conditional use permit for tutoring services, so the applicant is, is okay with the denial of the rezoning if, if there's an understanding that she could have a daycare and tutoring in the, in the, in the, in that building.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? You could state your name and address for the record, please.
Viviana Sanchez, thirty-three oh one North Taylor Road. I'm here to speak before the board. Thank you for your time. So right now, we are providing tutoring services at very low cost to help students that are in need. Right now, we have several students with special needs and educational need, and we've had so far very, very well success in their academic, and they're doing very well. And we want to extend our services during the day to our smallest children up to five years old, and focus very highly on educational services. As an educator myself, I know the importance of academics, and we want to be able to provide this service to the community so that they can, once they leave our facility, they have very strong foundational skills in reading and math, especially in reading, so they are able to succeed once they enter the school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Are there any questions for staff?
Mayor, I'm going to approve the requests.
So I'd like to have a little bit of discussion with it. So my understanding, Mr. Zavantes, is that, that the applicant is okay with the denial as, as presented?
Because the next item on your agenda is a conditional use permit for tutoring services for the same property. As long as there's an understanding that she could have a daycare included in the, in the conditional use permit.
And is that in the conditional use permit as requested, or what?
It's, so it's in the, it's for tutoring services, but tutoring service is very similar to a daycare.
So it would work.
So it's kind of in line, so it's just, as long as there's an understanding that tutoring service will include a daycare.
Okay, as long as, I mean, the way I'm thinking is that as long as the applicant at the end of the day basically can do what they need to do to provide the services that they're asking for. So it would be my recommendation to, to follow through with, with the recommendation by planning and zoning, which we did deny the, the zoning request, and then look at the next item as presented. Is there any other discussion? May I have a motion? I make, I move to deny the request for the rezoning. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second to deny the request for the C two zoning as recommended by our planning and zoning commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five zero vote. Motion fails to approve the C two.
So the next item is a conditional use permit to allow the tutoring services in the same property. And so we're recommending a one-year permit with those conditions, and so we're just asking the board to approve this, and with the understanding that that daycare will be also allowed.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Any questions for staff? Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented, but also with the condition that they could also have tutoring plus daycare service.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit allowing the tutoring services and a daycare at thirty-three oh one North Taylor Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, that's ordinance fifty-seven thirty-five.
Fifty-seven thirty-five, yes, thank you. Next item.
This is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for the Seven Brew Coffee Shop. This is on the east side of Sherry, just north of the Panda Express and just south of the proposta Chipotle restaurant. There's a little space, perfect for a coffee shop. So there you have to the south of Panda Express, to the northeast, the future Chipotle, and there's a space available for a, for a coffee shop. Perfect.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Are there any questions for staff or discussion?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the drive-through window. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next item.
And that's ordinance fifty-seven thirty-six.
Fifty-seven thirty-six. Thank you.
Next item is a conditional use permit to allow eight electric vehicle charging stations. This is at the parking lot of the Target store along the express, along Expressway eighty-three. They're proposing eight parking spaces next to the front entrance room. And no, no spaces are being removed, because anybody could park in those, in those spaces. Here's a photo from, from other places that the applicant provided.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit as requested for vehicle charging stations at Target? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Demetrius Austin. Address, one Tesla Road, Austin, Texas. If you give me a few moments on the mic, please, maybe personal observation, matter of business, and then ending with personal observation, and then perhaps even a request from counsel. Personal observation, tough act to follow today. I'm not sure if every city council meeting is this impactful, right, with veteran affairs, children's literacy, children's mental wellness, but I personally felt a bit moved, actually, sitting there, watching these things unfold for the last thirty minutes. My, the prayer at the beginning, mi, mi huelo, huela esposa, niño y niña americana, from Nuevo Leon, Monterrey. So I thought that was supremely interesting, just to see business conducted in two languages, right? I just buried my uncle of five boys, Austin boys, of four branches of the military, in a beautiful grounds in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, with the trumpet salute and the sound off with the, with the, with the guns, right? And to see that award given for beautiful groundskeeping was also quite, quite moving. Actually, it's kind of moving me right now, to be honest. Anywho, I thought that was just really nice, and I said, oh, that would probably, it'd probably be very cool to be a part of Mission Texas. I don't, didn't really know much about the city's history, but clearly we're here trying to conduct business, and I thought that was a, a personal fine point to the business that we're trying to conduct. We, Tesla espouse to put eight E V charging stations there at Target. They're our big box retailer partner. We're doing this a lot of locations around Texas. Brownsville is another location here in the Valley. I'm from Houston, we've got a lot of things going on over there, but here in Mission, we've, we've presented the planning and zoning last week. That went over pretty well. We're hoping to get a vote today or an endorsement today. We do have Tech dot's approval to provide additional funding for this public use charging station, which is part of their plan to electrify roadways every fifty miles or so from the federal government, so that's something that's already with us. And we have submitted for building permits circa yesterday, with the hope that that building permit and this conversation could stack against each other for a construction plan or approval within the next month or so, maybe first quarter of twenty-six, where we could bring this project to bear. That's the business part of it. I guess, I think the last part, personal observation again, was that, yeah, just at, at the conclusion of that planning and zoning meeting last, last Wednesday, it was gratifying to see, I think, two council members leaving the parking lot with their own E Vs, one a Cybertruck and one a Ford F-150 Lightning. It also brought into this fine point that these super charging stations are ubiquitous in nature, so it is not just Tesla is any one. We actually have a good number of partners now that are able to connect and use these chargers, such as the merit of our, of our NEB funding, of the Tech dot permit, and so not only, again, Tesla, but really every manufacturer that has an E V will be able to use and bring their, their experience to Mission Texas and the Target parking lot. That's the conclusion of my statements.
Thank you.
Personal acts after you guys leave is, could I grab a photograph of that plaque that you guys got from the grounds?
Yes, yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I love your cap, by the way.
It's worth the live up.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Are there any questions for staff?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
My second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the installation of eight vehicle charging stations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is ordinance number fifty-seven thirty-seven. I'm going to go out of order a little bit, only because this is a public hearing, and so we're still in the public hearings section of our meeting, so I'm moving to item number thirty-four, which is also a public hearing.
Mayor, I'm going to remove it from the table.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to remove item number thirty-four from the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
So this is the reconsideration of the conditional use permit for the Ice House at eight-fifteen North Francisco Avenue. This came before you last April, and that there was a condition that there be no live music outside. So that's the agenda item, is the applicants are asking for reconsideration of that condition that took place last April. Zoning is commercial, aerial photograph of the property, the floor plan, site plan, photos of the property, and so that's the outside courtyard where they would like to have their live music on occasion. So the applicant submitted a petition in support. Some of the signatures are within the notification area that are highlighted in green. The map showing who signed the petition in support, within two-hundred feet and within four-hundred feet, percentages. And then we also had, we also received a petition in opposition citing noise concerns. Some of the signatures are from within the notification area. And so that's the map showing who signed the petition in opposition within two-hundred feet and four-hundred feet, and then you have the percentages within two-hundred feet, four-hundred feet, and a supermajority vote was not triggered. We did, we checked with police department on, last April, if you remember, that we didn't have the police reports. Now we do for the last two years, so that's the list of incidents that took place, and one of them was a noise complaint, but that was in March prior to your April decision. This is the ordinance that was approved last April. It says no outside music, but my understanding is what the applicant was told is no live music. So this went before the planning and zoning commission, so that those are the list of conditions that staff is recommending approval for one year. This went before the planning and zoning commission. One opponent cited that now no live music should be allowed to respect the peace and quiet of the residents that live near the venue. The property owner to the north expressed concerns that the Ice House patrons are parking in his property without permission. After some discussion, the board recommended three-to-one at the following. They recommended approval to the live music outside for a six-month period to evaluate the noise complaints. Also, the applicant must obtain a decibel reader machine. The site plan must be professionally done, which they did. When the renewal is processed in six months, the applicant must make provisions for additional parking in the venue.
All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I live in Mission, off of Chimney Road, and I'm one of the co-owners of the property. I guess all I have to say is in compliance with everything. We are, my partner and I have gone over, and we are, we want to work with the neighborhood. We bought into this bar two and a half years ago now with the idea of upholding the traditions of the establishment. That is what it is. We have, our winter Texan season is coming up. We have three to six music that in the past years we've done Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Our live music at night, I understand I want to work with the neighborhood, that if there is a concern with everybody about the noise levels, we can, will definitely, we did attain a decibel reader meter, so we want to be in compliance with everything, just to continue the traditions of the establishment. We have a lot of support here tonight in favor. I look at it as we're providing, you know, a place for young musicians, older musicians to have their, have a place for them. Artists, we've had, we've held some art exhibits for local artists. I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not used to publicly speaking like this, but I'm just, when we, again, when we originally bought into this place, it was, all we wanted to do was uphold the entire tradition of the place and continue with entertaining our winter Texans, our locals, and keeping everybody happy as far as, I mean, if the noise levels are a problem, we definitely will address those. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, come on. Did you give us your name?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Vino Santian. I'm nine sixteen Bryce Drive, where they're from here. Originally, I'm not from here. I moved here about a year ago. I came from Harlingen and tried to start up a business and stuff like that, and nobody would give me an opportunity. Ice House gave me a shot. I had my own art exhibition there, and it was great. I loved it. Everybody saw my artwork and stuff like that. They told me I couldn't have music outside. At first I said yes, and then they said, no, we can't do it no more. I'm like, well, how am I going to talk to people? We can't have, this right here is louder than the music that we have out there. You can hear everybody around here, this, this, sounds to the mirror, it's super loud. It's not like that in the backyard, on the outside of the Ice House. It is not this loud. Yet, people complained about the noise. I couldn't have music, I couldn't have a microphone to talk to people, show them about my artwork and stuff like that. I had to literally go out there and talk to each one individually, which was a lot better, though, but still, we still needed some kind of microphone, some kind of speaker system to talk to people that couldn't hear me. There also had my engagement. I couldn't have music outside. I couldn't have all the people that are invited outside. Everybody had to go inside. We had to use a small speaker to have music inside, so I couldn't make my proposal inside the building instead of having it outside, you know, where everybody could see it and stuff like that. We couldn't do it. But yet, the bands that were there before, when I first showed up, they were amazing. People would come up from everywhere to hear the music. But now, people can't go there no more because they can't have music outside, you know. So it's something that I hope that changes, bring back the live music, bring back the atmosphere, bring back the winter Texans that go out there and enjoy the time, you know, people that get an opportunity like me to have and show their business and, you know, do special things that nobody else would give them a chance to. So I thanked them for that, so, I'm sorry, that's all I got. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Blashko. I live at nine twelve Lakeview Drive, Mission. Mayor, City Council. I moved here in nineteen, no, in two thousand twelve from Minnesota. I became a permanent resident two years later. I love it here, but I have seen the valley grow, and I know the winter Texans love coming down here, but they're losing places for entertainment, their music. They come down here to dance. They're old, they want to be young again. This is like the last of their years, and they love it here in the valley, and they love the music, but we're losing music here in Mission. We have five-by-fives getting ready to go. There's no place for them to go dancing and listen to music, and then they got good food there, so I just think it would be ashamed if we didn't have music there, really. Music is smoothing to the soul, it is. So, that's all I got to say right now.
Thank you. You can have your name and address, please.
Francisco Marin Jr., four oh nine Arango. As a patron of the bar, also a neighbor, I grew up around the neighborhood. I remember riding my bike after school to go hear the music at three. Now that I'm partially retired, could do that again. Well, guess what? I can't. But I remember riding my bike there every day after school to go listen to music, and now I can't even do that as an adult. I don't want to be inside locked up. I want to be one of my winter Texans, strong with the bodies about, and I can't do that no more. I was doing it when I was ten, eleven years old, sit outside on my bike, listen to music, and it, I'm appalled about the fact that we can't have music outside at all, period. I actually sit outside sometimes with my phone because I don't want to be locked up inside. As a veteran, I don't like to be inside. I want to be outside, and it was a place for me to go to, and I lost that this April. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and public. My name is Maria Serpena Salinas, seven oh nine Noble, Mission, Texas. I have a big home and a little home, four houses from the Ice House, and then I have another home in Miller. I grew up in this neighborhood in Miller Street. I worked in the La Rodeo San Moderas and went to the Ice House with my father to buy and pick up ice in the early sixties. It was a store that sold ice, hielo. Never beer and never a bar or cantina. Your daddy and my daddy were from the neighborhood, and they would never allow one disturbance for any family or children. I am an educator, and I hold a national certification. I hold a degree in regular ed and special ed all level, and I'm an international trainer, and I have traveled into Mexico and eighteen states in the United States. I'm a two-time world coach, New Haven, Connecticut, and Notre Dame, and I specialize in working with special children. I have many concerns about the Ice House Cantina Bar, and that needs to be addressed and corrected. We do not want outdoor music. We are presently enjoying the quiet and peace that you, council, gave us the opportunity to enjoy. We do not want outdoor music. We are presently enjoying the quiet and peace like so many great affluent neighborhoods. There have, there are only twelve parking spots outside and not one outdoor handicap indicator, which makes it an ADA violation. I was told by staff, and we received the letter, the letter didn't say anything about alcohol, I mean, excuse me, about music, it did specify alcohol. If there's only twelve parking spots and people laugh and can't believe it, there is not one handicap indicator, which makes it an ADA violation, but I was told by some of the staff that there's capacity for sixty inside. Wonderful. However, if there are a hundred and thirty inside, that they have to remove all the tables and chairs, the tables and chairs are never removed, and if there are a hundred and eighty capacity and they have to stand only, they have to remove the tables and chairs. And they said, oh, they can even have three to four hundred standing up, really? With twelve parking spots? People laugh at us. That's insanity. I used to ride my bicycle. I was one of the biggest athletes here in the state of Texas, and he's talking about his bicycle. You should see the latches now. Who checks to see how many people go inside? Where does everybody park? The fire department, are they checking also? Do they have a security or traffic control officer? No, and I have never seen one. There is no, there's no outside sidewalk on the west side. Why? There's one on the east side, and the Ice House customers are so insensitive that they go and park on top of the sidewalk, and I can prove it. The streets are overcrowded. When the winter Texans come in, they have no consideration for the neighborhood. Why are the customers parking on the north side that belong to the Peñas? When I talked to Mr. Bob Galligan, one of the owners, who made contact with me, he said, who's Fernando Peña? And who's Bobby Peña? I said, they're the owners, east, and the owners, north. They have signs. How many signs have they taken off of Mr. Peña? One, there's one sign right now, and we can prove all the illegal parking. Now, we want quiet and peace. They told me they want sun and they want dancing. Well, they can have it at their parks. There should, they should not be, and I'm telling you, council, and I hope you do take it into heart, that there shouldn't be no bars and no cantinas across residential areas. Look what happened in McAllen. And if it was grandfather to be a store, it was grandfather to be a store, not to be a cantina bar with outside music. And congratulations that you all got married or announced it, whatever, but don't make it sound like our fault, the citizens. I own a lot of properties in Mission and always pay my taxes. It degrades the quality of our lives there. You don't know how many kids have lost sleep or tell me, I know, my sister, then go ahead eat, because the Harleys are so loud and the screaming and the wah-wah-wah. My daughter's own Harleys. So, we want a good night's sleep, we don't want the yelling and screaming, and the residents, we signed an official petition. We didn't go and tell somebody, Omeida, if you get a combo burger, we're going to sign your name and we're going to put you in the list. We did it right. We did it in the neighborhood area. We weren't lying to people at our lady Guadalupe, and we can prove it all. So, we're just asking you, council, because you have been considered with this. We don't want to be deprived of our sleep, we don't want mental issues, we don't want emotional distress, and this bar has taken a very negative toll on our lives and our properties. So, we're asking to stop the abuse, the cars parking wrongfully, gross negligence, and please meet the needs and be sensitive to our community. Thank you so much. God bless everybody.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Daisy Reyes. Address is two one six North Street in Mission. I wrote this today as we were preparing to come over here, and it says, well, my name is Daisy Reyes. I frequently visit the Ice House. It is my favorite bar and grill, and one of the few remaining local spots in Mission that holds history and so many great memories. I would love to see the Ice House returned to what it was once, once was known for, its amazing outdoor entertainment. Many winter Texans have been visiting this bar for years, always looking forward to having a great time during the day and into the evening. The live music brings people joy and laughter, it unites us all, and keeps the spirit of the Ice House alive. We kindly come and ask that you please consider granting us the opportunity to enjoy live music once again at the special place we all call home, the Ice House. So, I would like to say that I am the one that helps coordinate the events alongside of the owners. Our last event was Halloween. Everything was held inside. We do wish, I mean, I don't, I think all businesses do, to have four hundred, three hundred, four hundred customers. I think we had not even sixty, not even. We don't, we would have amazing sales. We don't have, there is not a lot of people. We've been hosting them inside, and it's perfectly fine, it's okay, but we do wish to go on the outside because there's a lot of people who no longer attend, and that is, I'm talking about a lot of people, and it's sad because now they're going to other areas, spending money, doing stuff in other areas when they could just be there, and we're willing, I work alongside with them, we always try to keep everything We always try to keep everything minimal, music standard. We're inside now, but we still keep it low, because we like to speak. I mean, we're there and we want to talk amongst each other. We don't want to be deaf or we're screaming. There's no sense. And I would just like, see if you could consider this for the Ice House. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Fernando Peña, here in Mission. Yes, my biggest concern is the parking. We're right next to, where the owners of the property were next to the Ice House. And my brother owns the one in front, across the street. And cars come in and out and park in our place all the time. There's not enough places to park there. And they, they just get all over the place. I put signs and they take them off and stuff. And I get to the point that I don't know what to do. And then my brother in front of the street, maybe ten years ago, they started parking in his place if he called, because somebody can lift him up, you know, can pick up the cars and stuff. And they got kind of mad and for some reason they stopped doing it. And that's my biggest concern, that somebody's gonna get caught in my property and I'm gonna get blamed for it, you know. And he wants to work out with me or something, but I've got the property for sale. Right now I've got the property. And, and that's my biggest stuff. You know, that what am I gonna do with these people, you know? The parking, when the tourists are here, there's cars all over the place. And I'm not talking about ten, fifteen cars. Maybe there's thirty, forty, fifty cars there. And they park all over in front of my property and inside my property and everything. And that's my biggest problem. What's gonna happen if somebody gets hurt? What's gonna happen, you know? Because, you know, when people are drinking, they feel a little bit high and stuff. And if somebody falls down or something and gets hurt, they're gonna start blaming me. I cannot blame the city, the city, you know? And if they don't do anything, I could even mention, maybe a guard would be good going in there just when they've got parties or dances or something like that, you know, where some, that somebody could take care of. The city would recommend somebody, a policeman or something, or a guard or others take care of the property. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to say something different than what we've already heard? Anyone else? Can I have a show of hands of who's here in support of the Ice House? All right, thank you. And in opposition, I know that, okay, thank you. Yes. All righty.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion if I could.
Okay. Do you want to discuss it first, or just to kind of thought, your thoughts or?
Yeah. I understand both sides of the issue, but I also believe in fair compromise, supporting the peace of the neighborhood while also the entertainment for the patrons of the Ice House. My motion is to permit live music on Fridays and Saturdays until nine P.M. With the understanding also that Mr. Peña's property is not to be used until a solution comes about, and maybe there can be some talks about that, about how that property may be used in the future. And so, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I feel, I've thought long and hard about that. I've spoken to both sides. And I feel that that is something that we can discuss right now. If it becomes issues in the future, we can look into that then.
Okay. And for how long? The six or a year?
I'm okay with a year.
Six months?
Oh, six months to a year, as long as, with the understanding right, law enforcement would be called if there's any issues or neighbors have issues. And then we will, we will take up the issue again.
Also, I just have a real quick question before, before you, we get a second. Is there the requirement for a security guard?
No, it's not there. It can be added as an additional condition.
Okay. Would you agree to add that to your motion?
I would agree to add that to the motion only when there is parties out there with the live music, for the safety of the citizens that are attending there. And then also, I have the understanding that parking in the surrounding area can be off the street. But we do have to make sure that we're courteous, right, and respectful to the homes that are there.
Any, a second?
I'm sorry, but the attorney wants me to add a couple more things. And we do have, of course, an ordinance about the decimals of the music and all that stuff. And I hope that, I know our staff will get with the owners to make sure that all that is still lined up. I understand you all have been following those rules, so we want to continue with that.
So, I can clarify, just, so, the motion is approved as recommended by Council. We've retrieved the Council's opinion regarding the security guard and the time of live music on, I think it's Friday the 5th, it's nine o'clock. But that is just for the record, in addition to what staff recommended regarding them acquiring a decimal reader.
And that's the security guard.
And for one year.
Six months.
Six months, okay.
Well, I said six months to a year. I mean.
Well, it's because we need, we need one or, we need one or the other for the ordinance.
I take, I second the motion with a six months.
Okay.
What time do they start Friday the 5th? What time do they start Friday the 5th?
They just have to end at night, right? That's the, that's the.
Yeah, so, from twelve P.M. to nine P.M.?
Yes.
Okay.
On this, it says.
Fridays, Fridays and Saturdays. Well, so.
Monday through Saturday are ten and twelve A.M.
So, what we're gonna do, if I can have the list of, if I can have the list of conditions, please? So, we have hours of operations for the business. So, what we're, we're gonna do is on number ten, we're gonna add to number ten, right? Because the, the, the business has hours there. But for the live music outside, it's gonna be Fridays and Saturdays from twelve P.M. to nine P.M. with a licensed security officer. So, what we're adding is we're enhancing number ten.
Make sure you address the parking.
Yes.
So, there, is there any other, any other questions or discussion?
Did we say the security officer only when they're having an actual event? Or every, every Friday and Saturday?
During, when they're, okay.
I will do it Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Friday and Saturday.
Okay, just wanted clarification.
Ms. Rela, any questions?
I feel like I would just probably have to vote no, but it's up to everybody else.
All right. Any other discussion? No comments? Okay, and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Okay, so, it's a four to one?
Well, I have a comment, Mayor. I know that's already voted, but I, I just want to make something clear. I mean, I know most of you that are sitting here. And I know that it's kind of scary for some people in the neighborhood when we say if it's noon to nine. But I'm sure the live music is not gonna be from noon to nine. Let's be realistic. When you all have get-togethers, the owners are here. I understand that we didn't set an hour. I could have in my motion said six to nine. But I understand that sometimes you might have from three to six, and sometimes you might have from later, right? But I understand from speaking to you all that it's not gonna be live music all day Friday, Saturday from noon to nine o'clock.
Yeah, three, six is our.
Okay. So, just for the record, on my motion also is, you know, most of the time it's from three to six P.M.
Okay, all right. So, the motion.
Yes, sir, that's one of the requirements. And then, I don't know if you all can speak to Mr. Peña, if you all could put a sign on your, for your patrons to understand not to park in his property for safety and all of that.
Yeah.
Okay. They will put it on their establishment, Mr. Peña, and then maybe we could also assist you in having bigger signs made for that.
We've offered a, you know, a vote off.
There you.
Of the, of the side of his property to keep people out.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that as well.
We can do that too.
Richie?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. All right. Okay, all righty then. I think that concludes our public hearing. So, we're gonna move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda for items number eleven through twenty-eight.
Okay. There's a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented from items number eleven through twenty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And let's see, ordinance number?
Fifty-seven thirty-nine.
Fifty-seven thirty-nine is for item number fifteen. Resolution number twenty-twelve for item nineteen. Resolution twenty-thirteen for item number twenty. And that's it?
Yes.
Okay, all righty. Thank you so much. We'll move on to approvals and authorizations. Can we move to this items? I know we need to go here. I'm in, we're gonna, we're gonna move to item number thirty-three, because I know that we have several people here for that. And thank you for, so much for your patience. So, item number thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three deals with the authorization to award the bank depository contract. A total of proposals were received on October the sixth of two thousand and twenty-five for our bank services. Proposals received were from Freedom Bank, Frost Bank, Lone Star Bank, Texas National Bank, Texas Regional Bank, PNC, J.P. Morgan, and Plains Capital Bank. Seven of these proposals were deemed acceptable, and one was non-responsive. A committee evaluated the seven proposals for acceptability and critique in four categories, be it available technology and ability to provide required services, earning potentials, credit worthiness, collateral reference, and cost proposals. The committee consisted of five evaluators, one being an external consultant and four being staff. Bear with me. The term of the contract would be for the period of February the second, two thousand and twenty-six through December the thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-one. Staff identified Texas National Bank as the highest-ranked bidder, including the consultants evaluation. PNC and Plains Capital were the highest-ranked bidders. However, upon staff evaluation of current needs, the recommendation for bank depository is Texas National Bank. Staff and co-interim city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve as recommended by the staff and city manager.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is our current depository?
Texas National Bank.
Okay. And they've been working well with the city? We've had no issues with them?
We've had no issues. They've been very cooperative. As a matter of fact, they honored us doing an extensive need be if we were to change bank depot, bank depositories.
Okay. And who was part of the committee?
It was myself, Esasa, David, one of our senior accountants, Andy, and Linda Patterson.
Okay.
I, I have another question. What, the current contract that we have right now, for how many years was that contract?
I think it was for five years, Mayor.
Is five years?
Yeah, normally, yes.
A normal timeframe?
Ma'am?
Five years is the current?
Not, currently, yes. Yes, the law.
Well, not, not for us. Is that the standard?
Another city's yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Are there any other questions before we take a second?
No.
I'm staying.
You're a paying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. Sorry about that. Okay. Any other questions? I do have a second, right?
I made the motion.
You made the motion? You don't have a second?
I did a second. I have questions. Lots of questions.
Do you want to take this into executive session?
Yes, please. I would love to take it into executive session.
Let's go ahead and, you want to make, okay, there's a, a motion on the floor, but we want to withdraw your motion so we can go into executive session.
I withdraw the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll be right back.
Okay.
All candidates. They need to be the cabinet secretary.
Right, yes.
If the person is given more... Mayor, I'm going to reconvene.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously for zero. Okay. So we are back to item number 33. Right?
Mayor, on item number 33, I'm going to make a motion recommended by staff and city managers with term of the contract will be for period of February 2nd, 2026 through December 31st, 2029.
Okay. Second?
Second.
The motion and a second to award the contract to Texas National Bank. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Texas National Bank for the periods of February 2nd, 2026 through December 31st, 2029. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously for zero. Thank you.
You want me to do the other thing, please?
Senator Congress?
Yes.
Sure. Yes.
I just want to say my name is Marvin Williams of the Texas National Bank. On behalf of our team here with you, thank you very much for trusting us with your financial services for the next three years or to 2029. We appreciate it and we're always here to help in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, hold on a second. Let me just make sure that the... I said yes. Yes.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve a resolution for parcel number nine, 10, 13, 14, 15, and 16, which is item two to seven.
Items, it was item two to seven.
Two to seven.
Okay, and those would be resolution numbers?
It would be resolution 2014 for item number two, 2015 for item number three, 2016 for item number four, 2017 for item number five, and 2018 for item number six, and 2019 for item number seven.
Aye, second.
We're, I know, I missed something because you guys are still here.
Yeah, we did too.
Um, all the, the authors didn't hear approvals. Right, we didn't do approvals and offers.
Okay. We went to the end, yes. Well, we were, I was wondering why Beto. Yeah. Que pasa? We went out of order. Yes.
I'm going to table.
Okay, did we take a vote four zero on the resolutions, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes, all right.
We didn't do twenty-nine through what? We jumped to thirty-three. We didn't...
Oh, I know, I was wondering why Beto was like, oh, no.
Okay.
Yes.
Cervantes? So we're twenty-nine now.
Well, hold on a second, let me get these...
So thirty?
Chief, what's your item number?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay, let's do you guys. We're having way too much time, I think.
Good evening. Mayor Council, EMS Deputy Chief Joey Torres here on behalf of Fire Chief Mike Silva, seeking authorization to purchase a Class A traditional trainer, trailer, trainer, complete unit through Fire Blast Global via Cooperative GSA Advantage Contract number four-seven QSWA-two-zero-D-zero-zero-seven-M for a total cost of one hundred and forty-two thousand and two hundred dollars. The purchase of the Class A traditional trainer complete unit will enhance the department's training capabilities by providing realistic hands-on fire training scenarios. This equipment will allow firefighters to practice essential skills in a controlled environment, improving safety, efficiency, and preparedness during emergency situations. Staff and co-interim city managers recommend approval.
Okay, any questions or a motion?
Also move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the traditional trainer complete unit, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously four zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, you all have a great night.
Thank you. For that, you get a picture now. Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. All right, item twenty-nine.
Be safe.
Requesting a plat approval with, with conditions for the Sonoma Ranch subdivision on a main valley just north of mile two road, Sonoma Ranch Phase Three.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Motion?
Motion.
A second.
And a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously four zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Mayor, I can, I can present that if that's okay?
Yes, please. Where, where's the deputy? She should have stayed the whole meeting.
Took you more time to get over there.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council, item number thirty-one, approval of the Seventh Amendment to the Interim Administrative Services Agreement with the Mission Redevelopment Authority, Tax Reinvestment Zone Number One and the City of Mission, the Turge Board Director seeks approval of the Seventh Amendment Interadministrative Services by the City Manager Office. The Turge Number One will compensate the City of Mission twelve thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-six dollars per month during the term of the agreement for the cost of providing administrative services and support. The Seventh Amendment is to be effective October first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Approval is dependent on Mission Turge Board decision, which we had today and they approved it today at noon. Staff and co-interim city managers recommend approval.
Make approval, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and you...
Which one is the one that we approved a couple of the last meeting?
We talked about it at the workshop and we asked for a breakdown on the, on the, on what were...
Yes, Mr. Beto, you, you asked for a, a, for a breakdown, we sent it on the Friday memo. Also, I can go over if you want.
No, I'm okay, I'm very excited.
All right.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the Seventh Amendment to the Interim Administrative Services Agreement with the Turge, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously four zero.
Thank you, mayor, the next item is number thirty-two, approval of resolution number...
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, establishing a commitment to participate in the Texas Department of Transportation project described as a surface transportation block grant, project of system at Military Parkway from Inspiration Road to FM ten sixteen, which is Conway, a resolution establishing commitment to participate in a Texas project surface transportation block grant, this project will widen the road and add lanes on Military Parkway from Inspiration to FM ten sixteen, Conway, parties shall be responsible for utilities, environmental assessment and mitigation, architectural and engineering services, construction and right-of-way on real property, project consists of preliminary engineering, schematic, environmental documents, right-of-way acquisition, utilities, final design, plans, specifications, and estimate, PSNE, and construction for widening Military Parkway, resolution would authorize the mayor to execute the advanced funding agreement for the project, staff and co-interim city managers recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-twenty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously four zero.
Thank you.
That is the end. Now we'll take the motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously.